Every day in Connecticut, we lose three people to drug or alcohol-related overdose. And for every life lost, between eight and 10 are saved. When a person survives, he or she has another chance at life and at recovery. If you're in an emergency or feeling hopeless, a face like mine is one that you might see coming to help. At the Waterbury Fire Department, we're here for you. I'm Chief Terry Ballou, and you can come see me to learn more about how to help someone struggling with an addiction.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, June 7th, 2021. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a silent prayer.
Alderman Brunelli. Alderman Cavallo.
Present.
Alderman Cato. Alderman Dijo Vincaro.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Markey.
Present.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Present.
Alderman Nujain.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman Perneruski.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Thank you. We have a quorum. The first item of business this evening then would be public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board should have called in. We'll call back the callers in order. Please state your name and address for the record. There's a five-minute limit, and I will give you a one-minute heads-up if we can get the first caller on the line. Okay, caller, are you there? Caller?
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Thomas Pelletier. Good evening, Thomas Pelletier, 112 Cackard Street. Calling in support of your items on the agenda for this evening. I would ask that you approve them all. In particular, the one that I really like the most is item number eight, with Quaidell Manufacturing teaming up with Waterbury Career Academy. It's just another example of our great businesses that we are so lucky to have in the city of Waterbury, teaching our youth and through Waterbury Career Academy and the local businesses, getting most of those kids work as soon as they graduate high school. It's a nice thing for the city of Waterbury. Item number two, I would ask that you approve that for all of our Neighborhood Assistance Act applications. These are great organizations that do a lot for the city of Waterbury and could use a little helping arm, you know, with everything that most of our non-for-profits and everybody had to deal with with COVID. I think it's just a great idea. But mainly, I would just ask that you approve everything on here. There's something in it for everybody in the city, and these are great items here. And I would ask that you support the mayor's budget, whether it's being voted on tonight or in the coming meetings. Thank you very much again, and have a great evening and stay cool, everybody. It's been a hot couple of days. Thank you.
All right, we have no other callers this evening. So the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of Monday, May 24th, 2021. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
No move.
Motion having been made. Alderman Lopez, is there a second?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes is presented, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Before we go into, make a motion to go into committee of the whole, we have a couple of housekeeping items. So I would just note for the record that the Board of Education has reached out and asked to withdraw item number eight from this evening's meeting. So that will be withdrawn from the agenda. You should have received from the clerk an email today that had two items that were looking to add to the agenda. As item number 10 would be a contract regarding the 21st Century Summer Camp Program at YMCA Camp Matusha for the Board of Education. And item number 11 is basically just a receivable place on file, but it is the Coronavirus Pandemic Assistance Funding and American Rescue Plan Act Fiscal Recovery Funding for the city of Waterbury. And we would add that as item number 11. Okay, I'm sorry. It's items five through nine that are all withdrawn this evening by the Board of Education. So I think those are all subject to, they hadn't been acted on yet at the Board of Education meeting. So they've asked to withdraw all of those, but we're going to add on then items 10 and 11. So with that, is there a motion, Alderman Brunelli, with respect to adding items 10 and 11?
No move.
Alderman Lopez?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor of, is there any discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote will be to add the items, a no vote will be not to add the items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion carries, the items are added. With that, Alderman Brunelli, I'd entertain a motion to go into the committee of the whole.
No move.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we're sitting now as a committee of the whole. As you know, this evening, we're slated to take up the budget. And so we're going to do that first before we get to the new business items. Those are the items that are encompassed in old business items number four, which was the proposed operating budget for the fiscal year. Item number five, which is the capital improvement plan for the fiscal year that's coming up. And item number six, old business, which was the proposed water rates for the coming year. Those will all be actually adopted through the adoption of six budget resolutions. They are the same budget resolutions that were part of your original budget book that Sarah sent out early with the mayor's proposed budget in it. And they were also the same ones that came to you this afternoon. So what I'm going to do is, with respect to those three items together, we're just going to go through these resolutions one at a time. We'll make a motion, we'll have a discussion, and we will have a vote on them. And so, given the length of some of these, what I'm going to do is just read the title and the brief description for them, and then we'll go from there. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number one, a resolution making appropriations for the operating departments of the city of Waterbury for the ensuing fiscal year, FY '22 fiscal year pursuant to Section 9B-3C of the Charter of the City of Waterbury. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion having been made to approve, Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve resolution number one, a no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
No.
Let's do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo.
We can't hear him, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, hold on.
Alderman Cavallo.
She voted already.
I didn't hear her.
Okay. Alderman Cavallo, are you there?
No.
No.
Alderman Dijo Vincaro.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Markey.
No.
Alderman Matthews.
No.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Nujain.
Yes.
Alderman Salvio. Alderman Salvio.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman.
No.
Alderman Perneruski.
Yes.
Ten yes or no?
The ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is approved. Item number, resolution number two is a resolution approving the tax levy and appropriations for operating departments of the city of Waterbury for the ensuing fiscal year pursuant to Section 9BC of the Charter of the City of Waterbury. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve item resolution number two.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve resolution number two, a no vote would be to disapprove it. We'll do a roll call.
Alderman Brunelli.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo.
No.
Alderman Dijo Vincaro.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Markey.
No.
Alderman Matthews.
No.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Nujain.
Yes.
Alderman Salvio.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman Zimmerman. Alderman Zimmerman.
I was on mute, sorry, no.
Alderman Perneruski.
Yes.
Ten yes or no?
The resolution carries, or the motion carries, the resolution is adopted as presented. Resolution number four is a resolution making appropriations for the ensuing fiscal, the ensuing FY '22 fiscal year for the Water Enterprise Fund of the city of Waterbury. And it includes the assessment of the water charges. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve resolution number three.
All right, you know what, we skipped, hold on, I skipped three. Okay, three, resolution number four is the one for the water. So we'll go ahead and do four now, since the motion is there, we'll go back to three. So go ahead, Alderman Brunelli, it's resolution number four that we're on.
Motion to approve resolution number four.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to pass resolution number four, which is the resolution making appropriations for the upcoming fiscal year for the Water Enterprise Fund, including water rates. A no vote will be to disapprove resolution number four. All those in favor signify, all right, let's do a roll call, because we're going to go through the numbers.
Alderman Brunelli.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo.
No.
Alderman Dijo Vincaro.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Markey.
No.
Alderman Matthews.
No.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Nujain.
Yes.
Alderman Salvio.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman.
No.
Alderman Perneruski.
Yes.
Ten yes or no?
The motion carries, resolution number four is approved. Respect to resolution number three, which is a resolution making appropriations for the ensuing FY '22 fiscal year for the Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund of the city of Waterbury. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve resolution number three.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, then a yes vote would be to approve resolution number three, a no vote would be to disapprove it. Have a roll call.
Alderman Brunelli.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo.
No.
Alderman, Alderman Dijo Vincaro.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Markey.
No.
Alderman Matthews.
No.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Nujain.
Yes.
Alderman Salvio.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman.
No.
Alderman Perneruski.
Yes.
Ten yes or no?
The motion carries, and resolution number three is approved. With respect to resolution number five, a resolution adopting the schedule of fees and charges or services, licenses, and other purposes of the city of Waterbury for the ensuing fiscal year. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve resolution number five.
Is there a second?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve resolution number five, a no vote would be to disapprove it. And I would just note for the record that Alderman Poto has just joined us, so we'll get her, okay.
Alderman Brunelli.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo.
No.
Alderman Cato.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Dijo Vincaro.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso. Alderman Dorso?
Yes, sorry.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Markey.
Yes.
Alderman Matthews.
No.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Nujain.
Yes.
Alderman Salvio.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman.
No.
No.
Alderman Perneruski.
Yes.
Thirteen yes to no.
The motion carries, resolution number five is approved. With respect to resolution number six, a resolution allowing mathematical corrections to the budget of the city of Waterbury and emergency transfers for the ensuing fiscal year. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve resolution number six.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve resolution number six, a no vote will be to disapprove it. Let's do a roll call.
Alderman Brunelli.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo.
No.
Alderman Cato.
Yes.
Alderman Dijo Vincaro.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Markey.
No.
Alderman Matthews.
No.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Jane.
Yes.
Alderman Salvio.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Yes.
Alderman Perneruski.
Yes.
I got 12 yes, three no.
The motion carries, and resolution number six is approved. With respect to the capital budget, capital budget resolution number one, a resolution making appropriations for capital expenses of the city of Waterbury for the fiscal year July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, pursuant to Section 9B-3C of the Charter of the City of Waterbury. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
I actually have a quick question. So this is the capital improvement now, right? Because this is just a little bit confusing the way we're breaking it out for me. We're talking about capital improvement now?
Talking about the capital budget, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve capital budget resolution number one, a no vote would be to disapprove it. Let's do a roll call.
Alderman Brunelli.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo.
Yes.
Alderman Cato.
Yes.
Alderman Dijo Vincaro.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Markey.
Yes.
Alderman Matthews.
Yes.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Nujain.
Yes.
Alderman Salvio.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Yes.
Alderman Perneruski.
Yes.
Fifteen approved.
The motion carries, and capital budget resolution number one is approved. Respect to capital budget resolution number two, a resolution approving the capital expenses for the city, for the departments of the city of Waterbury for the fiscal year July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, pursuant to Section 9B-3C of the Charter of the City of Waterbury. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve capital budget item number two.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve capital budget resolution number two, a no vote would be to disapprove it. Let's do a roll call.
Alderman Brunelli.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo.
Yes.
Alderman Cato.
Yes.
Alderman Dijo Vincaro.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Hunter.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Markey.
Yes.
Alderman Matthews.
Yes.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Nujain.
Yes.
Alderman Salvio.
Yes.
Alderman Weaver, Alderman Weaver.
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Yes.
Alderman Perneruski.
Yes.
Fifteen approved.
The motion carries, and capital budget resolution number two is adopted or is approved. Okay, with that, we'll go then to the new business items on the agenda. Item number one is a submittal of the financial status report for April 21st from Sarah Gary, the manager of budget development and oversight, to receivable place on file. Item number two is approval of the 2021 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act applications from the following organizations, the Children in Placement Connecticut Incorporated, Habitat for Humanity, the Hispanic Coalition of Greater Waterbury, Literacy Volunteers of Greater Waterbury Incorporated, New Opportunities Incorporated, Neighborhood Housing Services of Waterbury, and Waterbury YMCA. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number two.
Thank you. Alderman Martinez McCarthy, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Alderman Lopez?
Thank you for recognizing me as the executive director of the Hispanic Coalition of Greater Waterbury and a proud member of the Board of Directors and New Opportunities. I choose to recuse myself from voting on this item, thank you.
Mr. President, Belinda, I also have to re-choose myself.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, any other discussion? With that, then, a yes vote would be to approve the Assistance Act applications, a no vote would be to disapprove it, with the record reflecting Alderman Lopez and Alderman Weaver abstaining. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Okay, I'm sorry for that delay, thank you. I'm sorry, no. Okay, I'm sorry for that delay. Before we go on to item number three, with respect to the withdrawals that I noted before, as I said, those were all scheduled to be taken up by the Board of Education at a later meeting. But item number nine should not have been withdrawn. And so we're going to leave that one on the agenda, and I'll talk to that when we get to it. But I just want to let you know at this point, item number nine, we're going to go forward with this evening. So with that, we'll go to item number three, which is a request for the release of a public assistance lien for 17 Handen Avenue, Waterbury, based on the full payment of the lien. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to approve item number three. Motion to approve Item Number Three.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none then, a yes vote will be to approve the release of the assistance lien, a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the lien is released. Item number four is a license agreement between the City of Waterbury and Congresswoman Joanna Hayes for use of parking spaces in the Buckingham Plaza parking garage. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Item Number Four.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none then, a yes vote will be to approve the license agreement, a no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no?
No.
All right, let's do a roll call.
Alderman Brunelli?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo?
Yes.
Alderman Cotto? Alderman Cotto?
Yes.
Alderman DGL Van Carlo?
Yes.
Alderman Dorso?
Yes.
Alderman Hunter?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Markey?
Yes.
Alderman Matthews? Alderman Matthews?
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Nujain?
Yes.
Alderman Salvio?
Yes.
Alderman Weaver?
Yes.
Alderman Zimmerman?
I originally said no, I apologize. I'm clear on what I was confused about. I'm changing my vote to a yes. Thank you.
Alderman Perneruski?
Yes.
Fifteen yes.
The motion carries unanimously and the license agreement is approved. Okay, now with respect to item number nine, which is requesting we view an approval of a memorandum of understanding with the TATA American International Corporation to provide technology education at no cost to the youth. This item shows up as being subject to approval at the regular meeting of June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, but the contract is going to begin on the twenty-first, which is our next meeting, and the training is beginning this coming Thursday, and the Board of Education at their last workshop meeting has given tacit approval to moving forward with this. So under the circumstances, and we'll see item number ten that we're taking up tonight is also a contract that's beginning on the twenty-first. I'm going to ask that we consider this tonight and recommend approving it so that we can move forward. We're not holding these contracts up, but I am going to have a serious conversation with the Department and Board of Education to get us into a cycle so that these things are coming to us after the Board of Education has approved or considered them and approved them and sent them along. But because we're running to the end of the year and these are programs that are for our students over the summer, and that is coming quickly, and they'll be beginning the same day we meet, I don't want to hold them up. I'm going to ask you to take them up this evening and consider them. So with that, item number nine, Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion approved, Mr. President, Item Number Nine.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none then, a yes vote will be to approve the memorandum with TATA American International Corporation, a no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries. The MOU is approved. With respect to item number ten, it's the Twenty-First Century Summer Camp Program at the Y M C A Camp Matasha. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Item Number Ten.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, so I would note that this Twenty-First Century Community Learning Grant has been awarded eighty-four thousand dollars, and the Connecticut State Department of Education After-School Grants has been awarded eighty-seven thousand dollars for a summer camp day program to be held at the Y M C A's Camp Matasha in Watertown. Duggan, Gil Martin, Reed, Driggs, Reagan, Walsh, Washington, Carrington, North End, Tinker, Hopeville, Kingsbury, Wilson Wallace, and the West Side Middle Schools will collectively send six hundred students to camp for two weeks per school with no overlapping weeks. The cost per student is four hundred and fifty-five dollars, and the funding is from the federal government with State of Connecticut Department of Education Management. The program runs for eight weeks, and it begins on June twenty-first and runs through August twenty-second. The Y will provide round-trip bus transportation funds or bus transportation for the students, and the Y M C A has written into all of the Twenty-First Century Grants as a community partner and State of Connecticut authorized funding to be used for summer camp as a partner, also waiving any bidding process, okay? So with that, even though it will not be taken up by the Board of Education until the seventeenth, because it starts on the twenty-first and it's tied in, it doesn't cost the city any money. It's important that we do this. I'm going to ask that we consider it this evening. So with that, is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Alderman Markey?
Were these actually emailed to us somewhere? Because I don't see them in my emails, both of these, ten and eleven, you have adding on.
Yeah, neither have I.
They were both sent out, I believe, today.
Because I have my email here from Alderman, and there is nothing in it that has been submitted to us. And with that being said, if not being submitted to us, we really shouldn't vote on something that we don't have in our hands.
My email shows that it came and that it was sent to Alderman Matthews, Nujain, Cavallo, Zimmerman, Weaver, Cotto, Dorso, Brunelli, Hunter, Markey, DGL Van Carlo, Salvio, McCarthy, and Lopez. So they were sent out today.
I didn't get it.
And neither did I, so. I'm looking at, it's right here in my hand.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. I didn't get it.
Well, if we don't take it up for this evening, they won't be able to start on the twenty-first, so it's a contract that is no funding coming from the city, so I'll leave it to you. The motion has been made and seconded, but I'll leave it to you as to where you want to go with it, but let me ask you this. Has anybody else not get it besides Alderman Markey and Alderman Cavallo?
Mr. President, can you tell us, what time did you guys see it? What's the timestamp on it?
It was sent at eleven-twelve this morning.
From Angela?
From Angela.
I have an email from her at eleven-twelve. I'm trying to go through it.
Now maybe that didn't include that one. Hold on.
No, it didn't. All that's on there is the COVID pandemic assistance.
And the American Rescue Plan Act.
Yeah, so that is not on there.
Okay. You're correct. I'm sorry, I saw that one, and I knew they were sending these out, so I thought that was in those. And they're not in there.
I mean, so obviously, we want to support children going to a camp. But maybe someone can go through the details quickly so we can hear them. Or.
Darren, are you there? Is there anybody from education? I see Darren's on the screen. Can you hop in?
They need a few minutes.
Go ahead. Darren, there's concern because apparently this item did not end up, number ten, or did not end up getting emailed out to the Alderman today. I thought it did. And understanding the urgency of trying to get this done for the twenty-first, the question is, can you sort of walk us through this, or do you have someone who can?
Sure. So this is a grant that allows our students that are in our schools to attend Camp Matasha, the Y M C A Camp Matasha in Watertown, free of charge for the students. Students that receive the Twenty-First Century Grant are from Duggan, Gil Martin, Reed, Driggs, Reagan, Walsh, Washington, Carrington, and North End, Tinker, Hopeville, Kingsbury, Wilson Wallace, and West Side Schools. Collectively, about six hundred students, and it typically costs a student four hundred and fifty-five dollars. We have a few funding sources that pay for this. The first funding source is called the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers Grant, a grant awarded to us from the state. We also have the Connecticut State Department of Education After-School Grant that we also use to pay for this. The first grant, we used eighty-four thousand dollars. The second grant was eighty-seven thousand dollars that we used for it. The remaining for the twenty, the remaining funds are from previously budgeted through general budget, because the Twenty-First Century Grant in its fourth and fifth year required the district to pay for twenty-five percent of what the grant would normally cover as a way to sustain the programming. So there's a small allocation that we've used from the general budget that we put into the education budget to pay for this for students to attend. Would you require more?
Does anyone have any questions based on what Mr. Schwartz has explained?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Darren. With that, then the motion on the table is to approve the Twenty-First Century Camp Program at Y M C A Camp Matasha. There's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the program is approved. Item number eleven was a receivable place on file, but I know there had been some questions about how the pandemic assistance and the American Rescue Plan funds were being used, which is why they they put this on the agenda for this evening. But if Mike is here, if anybody has any questions, he'll be willing to entertain them. So then, hearing none, we'll just let that go. There's no action required. Respect to standing committees, I'd entertain a motion to approve refunds for tax overpayments in the amount of eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-six cents. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion approve refunds.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any questions? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the refunds signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no?
Aye.
The ayes have it, and the refunds are approved. And I think we've taken care of all the items on the old business we need to address this evening. So with that, I would entertain a motion, Alderman Brunelli, that we return to the regular order of business.
Don't move.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
All right, so the following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is a receivable place on file. Item number two is on consent to approve the Neighborhood Assistance Act applications. Item three is on consent to approve the release of public assistance lien, seventeen Hampden Avenue. Item four is on consent to approve a license agreement between the City of Waterbury and Congresswoman Hayes' office for the use of parking spaces in the Buckingham Garage. Item five is on, item five, six, seven, and eight were withdrawn. Item nine is on consent to approve a memorandum of understanding with TATA America International Corporation to provide technology education at no cost to the youth. Item number ten is on consent to approve the Twenty-First Century Summer Camp Program at Y M C A Camp Matasha. Item number eleven was a receivable place on file. And with respect to old business items four, five, and six, resolutions for the operating budget, water and sewer are approved as Resolution Number One, Resolution Number Two, Resolution Number Three, Resolution Number Four, Resolution Number Five, and Resolution Number Six. And capital budget is approved through Resolution, Capital Budget Resolution Number One and Capital Budget Resolution Number Two. So those are all on the consent calendar. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none then, a yes vote will be to approve the consent calendar as presented, a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the consent calendar passes unanimously and is therefore approved. With that, it's been. Oh, you know what I didn't do, I think, as part of the consent calendar? Did I do the refunds?
Refunds.
No, did I include those? Okay. With respect to the good of the order, I will be having a conversation, so we'll try to get the Board of Education into sync with us so we're not getting these things to be approved pending their next meetings for a while. That was working well, but we don't actually meet on exactly the same type of schedule, so we'll try to resolve that. And going forward, and I apologize, I thought that those documents were in the email that went out today. So that's my fault for misleading you earlier, and I apologize for that. It wasn't my intent. But going forward, unless we can get these items, even if they're to be added and they're substantive the Friday before, unless there are extraordinary circumstances, we're just not going to go through with them, because we should have a chance to see them at least over the weekend. We tried to get that week and a half, not always possible, but I think we really have to start getting a chance, that people have a chance to look at these and formulate any questions, so we'll move that. Although, understanding that there may be those situations in which it really is important to get it done, and there will be more serious consequences by not acting, and we'll figure out how to address that. So with that, is there anything further for the good of the order this evening?
Mr. President?
Alderman Hunter?
Thanks for recognizing. When we did the consent, and we had two on number, item number two, we had Alderman Weaver and Alderman Lopez recuse themselves. It was okay for them to vote on the overall consent?
Oh, you know, we should have probably pulled those out. Good point. Thank you, Alderman Hunter. Let me do this. I'd entertain at this point a motion for the reconsideration of the consent calendar. Alderman Brunelli?
Don't move.
Alderman Lopez?
I can't.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy? Anybody? Is there a second?
Anyone?
Alderman Hunter, I think you said second, so we'll recognize him. The motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? So, all right, let's do it this way. All those in favor of reconsidering signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? The ayes have it, we'll reconsider it. At this point, I would entertain a motion that we amend, or we make a new motion to approve the consent calendar as items one, three, four, nine, ten, eleven, standing committee report, and old business items number four, five, and six, with implementing resolutions for the operating budget, water and sewer resolutions one through six, and capital budget resolutions one and two. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Don't move.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the consent calendar is approved. With respect to new business item number two, which is With respect to new business item number two, which is the approval of the 2021 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act applications, Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, item number two.
Alderman Lopez?
I can't.
Oh, you can't. Alderman Martinez McCarthy? Alderman Hunter, second. Thank you. Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? And the record will reflect that Alderman Weaver and Alderman Lopez will be recusing themselves from this vote. Anything further? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve item number two, a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, with the exceptions of Alderman Lopez and Weaver, who recuse themselves. Thank you, Alderman Hunter. With that, is there anything else for the good of the order?
Mr. President, I just have a question on the consent calendar, as far as how we voted, because we don't normally have a big diverse nos and yeses, so we're all recorded for the nos and the yeses, but it was approved because as a whole, we approved it, correct?
Yes.
That's how it goes?
So what, what happens, what we've been doing, just to put this in the context, under the charter and under our own operating rules, any item that comes before the board has to be referred to a subcommittee of this board. And when we were meeting in person, we were doing that through generally the two subcommittees that met in the middle of the meeting. For larger items, we would take them up as a committee of the whole. Because we've been meeting remotely due to COVID on the Zoom, it was just thought to be easier, rather than trying to split into committees on the screen and operate that way, that we just do all of it for the committee of the whole. So we go through it as a committee of the whole, which is what you would normally be doing in your finance committee or intergovernmental committees, and then just to complete the circle for this board to actually act on the committee recommendations, we adopt the consent calendar. So if anyone wished, when the consent calendar came up, not to vote for a particular item, that's after the motion is made, when I ask if anyone has additions or deletions to the consent calendar, a, as we did in this particular case, and Alderman Hunter suggested, removed item number two from the consent calendar, so we could take it up separately. That can be done if you wish to vote against the item, whereas in this case, two of our Aldermen were going to recuse themselves from the item, so the record would reflect that.
Okay, and then as far as the votes on the budget and the capital budget, I don't have, we don't have to remove any consents when we individually voted no versus a yes, correct?
So the record will reflect at this point that you voted no in the committee and yes in the, no in the committee of the whole, but yes, sitting as a full Board of Aldermen.
I voted yes, sitting as a Board of Aldermen, or the Board of Aldermen voted yes.
So the motion, the consent calendar passed unanimously, so everyone will be recorded as having voted yes a, as an Alderman. You voted no in the committee, it's possible to do both.
Okay, so I'm not aligned to that, and I didn't say anything when I voted, because I'm, I'm trying to figure out what's going on, I got a little confused, to be honest.
Okay.
So what do we do now?
So what is it?
Mr. President? With all due respect.
What is the result that you would like? Would you like to be on record for voting no?
Right, the way I voted, I would like to be in the consent calendar.
Would everyone, would everyone who voted no on a particular item like the consent calendar to reflect those items?
Yes, I would like for it to reflect that I voted no.
Okay.
Yes.
Alderman Matthews, Alderman Zimmerman, Alderman Cavallo, yes?
Yes.
And Alderman?
Markey.
Who else voted no?
Markey.
Markey, I'm sorry, yes. How could I forget you, Alderman Markey? So, okay. And let, let, let us do this for this time, but going forward, if you watch your, if you voted no in the committee of the whole, but you wanted to reflect a no vote when we come back out on the floor, you have to ask for that item to be removed from the consent calendar. After this, a motion to approve the consent calendar and it's seconded, when I ask if there's any additions or deletions, that would be the time to ask to be recognized and say, ask that you remove item number two, or items number four, five, and six from the consent calendar, and then we'll vote on the consent calendar as a whole, and we'll vote on those items you ask to have removed individually.
I very much appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, so for this evening, if there's no objection, I will have the clerk, and let's, let's do this as a motion, Alderman Brunelli, if you would make the motion when I'm done. The motion is for the record to reflect that the Aldermanic votes with respect to the budget implementing resolutions, number 1, 2, 6, for the operating budget, water and sewer, and capital budget resolutions one and two, the votes will, sitting as the Board of Aldermen, will reflect the votes that were done in the committee of the whole.
Don't move.
Alderman Brunelli, Alderman Lopez, is there a second?
I second.
Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Board.
Okay, so with that, the record will reflect it, but as I said, going forward, if you really want that to reflect it in the minutes, make sure that you ask to have those items you wish to vote against removed from the consent calendar, and we can do that.
Yes.
Okay. With that, all those in favor of having the record reflect the votes in the committee of the whole, on the board as a whole, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Okay, the record will reflect Alderman Nujem as the sole no vote.
No, it was Alderman Van Carlo.
I'm sorry?
Alderman Van Carlo voted no.
Oh, Digo Van Carlo, I'm sorry.
We've been over those a little.
You guys not only look alike, you sound alike. Alderman Digo Van Carlo.
Hey, I got way more hair, come on.
Alderman Digo Van Carlo will be reflected as a no vote. Does that make sense, that before we leave? Are you good with everything we've done tonight? Okay, all right. On the committee of the whole, yeah, but we'll have to change it so that, we'll work it tomorrow, and we'll do it, okay. All right, because of this, is Linda still there? I don't know if she left, so, all right. Is there anything else?
What about item eight?
Item eight was withdrawn.
That's Tommy's favorite, though, what are you going to tell him?
It's withdrawn, so, is, is there anything else? With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn, Alderman Brunelli.
Motion to adjourn.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Thank you, motion having been made and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, opposed, no. The ayes have it, we stand adjourned, we'll see you all in two weeks. Thank you for your time, and have an enjoyable couple of weeks, hopefully the weather will stay summery.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.